We have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Closed session items are as follows. 2.1 Recommended Expulsions, 2.2 Recommended reinstatements, 2.3 Public Employee Assignment/Reassignment Appointment, 2.4 Public Employee Discipline/Dismissal/Release Complaints, 2.5 Conference with Labor Negotiator, 2.6 Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, and 2.7 Anticipated Litigation. Public comment on closed session items will be heard at this time. Pursuant to Board policy, the Board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. There are no comments. The Board will now adjourn to closed session. We will now convene the regular session. I'm going to introduce the interpreter. Alondra Moran will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the proceedings, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this room. This announcement will be now shared in Spanish.
Alondra Moran servirá como intérprete el español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español. El ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones. Gracias.
Thank you. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public who would like to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form, located on the table at the northeast entrance of this room. Please hand the completed form to the Board Manager, Monica Andrew, before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item on which you would like to comment. Ms. Andrew is located in the back of this meeting room. Thank you. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. We'll now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Board Member Todd Odo will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. The student performance for this evening is El Diamante High School Orchestra and Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Andy DeMayo.
Thank you, Board President Naylor, Superintendent Shrum, Board members, and parents who are with us tonight. You guys picked a great night to come. Not only are we doing awards, but we always start our evening with a performance by our students, and this one's a great one. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce the El Diamante Chamber Orchestra, led by Mr. Avila and Ms. Schofield. And tonight, they're going to be presenting the first movement from the Abdellazour Suite. I practiced that, by the way. The music was first composed in 1695 and was designed to be played as a sort of soundtrack to a live play. Next week, in fact, these students will be joining the rest of the El Diamante Advanced Orchestra as they perform this suite in its entirety at the annual CMEA Orchestra Festival. This year, that's taking place at Tiller Reunion, so we'd love for you guys to join us. So, take it away, orchestra. That was fantastic. That was fantastic, students. Thanks so much for that.
Thank you. That was a great presentation, beautiful music. Really appreciate that. We'll now move on to our Public Recognition, Winter Athletics, and Visual and Performing Arts students. And presenter is the Administrator of School Leadership, Ms. Liz Serrato.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Naylor, Board Members, and Superintendent Shrum. Tonight, I have the pleasure to get us started in our student recognition for athletics and VAPA. But before we do that, I would like to recognize the parents, friends, and family, and I see a lot of grandparents as well in the audience, for, I would like to recognize you for your efforts in making sure that you provide transportation, that you provide hours of countless listening to playing of music in your home and cheering for your students on the sideline, whether it's early in the morning or in the evening. Thank you. We value your efforts in being partners with us in your students' success. To get us started, I'm going to call to the front Mr. John Perez to introduce our star athletes, and then Mr. McFarlane to celebrate our VAPA students.
Thank you. Tonight, I have the honor to introduce Visalia Unified's outstanding winter sports teams and individual student athletes. I want to take a moment to express our thanks to the parents and everyone who has supported these athletes throughout their journey. Your commitment to being there for them, to supporting them through every victory and every challenge, has made all the difference in their development, not just as athletes, but as individuals. Tonight, we'll be taking photos of all the students being recognized. To access these photos, there is a QR code located at the back of the room... somewhere. Thank you. And first, I'm going to introduce our girls and boys wrestlers. If you could please step forward as I call your name. From El Diamante, Mia Servantes. She was the EYL League Champion, third at Division II Section Championships, and fourth at Masters. Christopher Creason. The EYL League Champion, Division III CIF Section Champion, second at Masters, and the first ever Wrestling State Champion at El Diamante. Their girls head coach is Jackie Creason, and the boys head coach is Chris Creason. From Redwood, Audrey Segura. EYL League Champion, second at Division I Section Championships, third at Masters. Emily Carvalho. The EYL League Champion, second at Division I Section Championships and second at Masters. Gunnar Benedict, EYL League Champion... Sorry. Fourth at Division I Section Championships, fifth at Masters. Adrian DeLeon. EYL League Champion, third at Division I Section Championships, fourth at Masters. Brody Pryzdendorf. EYL League Champion, and seventh at Masters. And Blake Rainwater. Ninth at Masters. The girls head coach is Jessie Ramirez, and the boys head coach is Dave Watts. And finally, from Mount Whitney, Isaiah Cologne. EYL League Champion, first at the Division III Section Championships, and eighth at Masters. Boys head coach is Gonzo Mesa. Athletic Director is Luke Vaidak, and Principal's Principal Alex Marakine. Each of these wrestlers advanced to the CIF State Championships held at Mechanics Bank Arena in Bakersfield on February 27th through March 1st. Can we please get one more round of applause for their great performances? Please pose for a quick picture. What do you need him to do? Thank you. You guys can exit out the door right here. Next, from Redwood High School is the Redwood Cheer Team. The Rangers were the Division III Section Traditional Competitive Cheer Champions for the 24-25 season, which was held at Buchanan High School on January 18th. Team members are Kayleen Barnes, Autumn Flores, Jennifer Gagnon, Anaya Gonzalez, Emily Hernandez, Regan Keeter, Sophia Mendez, Autumn Milburn, Sienna Minnesota, April Morales, Ayla Morgan, Jenna Tefoya, Mia Trevino, and Chelsea Vela. Cheer Advisor is Yvette Wright. Head Coach is Maureen Diaz. I want to thank all these girls for showing up tonight. One final applause for Redwood Cheerleaders, and then they'll take a picture. Looks like they know what they're doing. Thank you again. Next, from Golden West High School is the Girls Wrestling Team. The girls were the Division I CIF Central Section Champions, and this is the first Division I Girls Wrestling Championship for VUSD. In addition to being the EYL League Champions, the Trail Blazers also won the Redwood, the Sanger, the Lamoore, and the Mission Oak tournaments. Team members, and I'm going to read fast, so you're going to get your applause the whole time. Serenity Bame Novella, Bea Castillo, Destiny Chavez, Kayla Fernandez, who was the Division I Section Champion. She was second place at Masters and an eighth-place medalist at the State Meet. Marissa Luna, Rebecca Miller, Justine Perez, who was fourth place at Masters and qualified for the State Championships. Ariana Ramos, Gia Monet Ramos, Alexis Rios, Daniela Rosales, Hillary Topete, who is the team manager, Alexa Torres, first place at Masters. She also qualified for State. And Carly Williams. Girls head coach is Andrew Sanchez. One final applause for the CIF Central Section Division I Champions. Thank you. And finally, from Golden West High School, the Boys Wrestling Team. Standing in front of you, the Trail Blazers are back-to-back Division IV CIF Central Section Champions. And I'm sure they are hoping for a repeat next year. Team members, and again, I will read their names fast. Jason Andrade, Aiden Archaga, Rowan Buttry, Alex Carmona, seventh place at Masters, and he qualified for the State Meet. Isaac Carmona, Jessie Enriquez, Adam Esquida, Jason Gutierrez, David Lopez, Nate Miller, Blake Pacheco, Jose Rosales, Caleb Settles, and Garrett Taylor. Boys head coach is Richard Sanchez. Again, one final applause for the CIF Central Section Division IV Back-to-Back Champions. Gentlemen, can pose for a quick picture? There's no wrestling mats, so they're a little out of the element. And again, for all parents in attendance, there is a QR code that'll have all these pictures available for you guys to download. Again, congratulations to all athletes tonight, parents and athletes. You are more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the board meeting. However, if you'd like to take this time to go and celebrate your athlete, I encourage you to do so now. Thank you. I'd like to now introduce Alan McFarlane, the Director of Visual and Performing Arts.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm excited to recognize both individual and team accomplishments within the field of Visual and Performing Arts. So first, I'd like to highlight some outstanding choir students. So students, come on up. So... So after a rigorous audition process, the students before you were selected to California's Central Region Honor Choir. So even larger than the Central Valley, the Central Section consists of 14 different counties, spanning from Nevada, the Nevada border as far north as Stockton, all the way down through Kern County. And these students, they all performed in Clovis on November 9th. So students, as I call your name, please take one step forward. Audience, please hold your applause until all students have been named. So from El Diamante, Emli Ruiz, Harrington Rochal, Noah Rosario, Diana Padilla, Janie Sperry, Minkay Doyle. From Redwood, Abigail Ray, Amelia Foltz, Bryn Lee Travis, Katie Robles. And from Mount Whitney High School, Brayden Lyons and Timothy Flores. Ladies and gentlemen, your Central Section Honor Choir. We have, just a second. Yeah, hold on. So if that wasn't impressive enough, actually, five students from Visalia were then selected to perform for the All-State and with the All-State Honor Choir. So they performed in Sacramento in January, on January 18th. So the following students, if you are here, will you please step forward? Diana Padilla, Janie Sperry, Minkahay Doyle, and from Mount Whitney High School, Brayden Lyons and Timothy Flores. All right. At this time, we'll take their picture. And again, like you heard with athletics, if you just got here, when you leave the door, there is a QR code. Take a flyer, take a picture, and these pictures will be uploaded for your keeping later. If you are a fan of choir, one of them are running away to the Redwood Choir Program or Choral Program, has a concert tonight at LJ. So if any of you are bored tonight, go ahead and follow her out. All right. Next, I'd like to recognize some outstanding orchestra musicians. Come on down, students. So also, after a really rigorous audition process, the students walking in before you, each of them were selected to perform with the California Orchestra Directors Honor Orchestra. All of these students performed at Santa Monica High School on Saturday, December 7th. So students, same thing here. As I call your name, take one step forward. And audience, please hold your applause until all have been announced. Seventeen students from Visalia made this group. Obviously, not all are here, but let me read. So from Golden West, Jianwei Wei, Mateo Zacharias. From Redwood, Abigail Rodriguez, Caleb Spink, Emma Grace Diaz, Gabriel Etienza, Gavin Oblad, Kaitlin May, Samuel Nikurumbo, Sierra Carlson, Sophie Sabayas, Yong Li, Zoe Lovegrin, Julianne Arakai, Bianke Lumapas, and Zachary Timoka. And from Mount Whitney High School, Giovanni Jaimez Chavez. And similar to choir, we actually had some students advance to the All-State level. So two of our students from Visalia Unified advanced to the California All-State Orchestra Performance. Those students, both from Redwood, Bianke Lumapas and Zachary Timoka. These students are joined by the Orchestra Directors, both at Redwood, Rodney Yakota, Elijah Avila, and from Mount Whitney High School, Maxen Vera, and Jayden Perez. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Honor Orchestra students. To round out the Visual Performing Arts section of tonight, I want to take this chance to recognize three outstanding performance ensembles or performing groups. Students, come on up. All right. So first, to recognize Redwood High School Dance Force. This season, after multiple top placements at both the CIF Central Section and the USA Regionals, the Redwood Dance Force once again qualified for the USA Dance Nationals, which will be held in Anaheim later this month. They're looking to defend last year's performance, which included four top-six performances and even a national championship in the open-medium lyrical category. So today, of course, it's a big team, but representing the Redwood Dance Force, we have Gwyneth Miller, Mia Ribery, and Karis Nepinski. Congratulations and good luck there this month. And then finally, we have two different groups with the remaining students here. Two different performing ensembles that have both qualified to perform in the prestigious State Choral and State Orchestra Festivals later this spring. So after a really tough process to get in, it includes having a high enough rating at a public festival. It includes sending in a live performance. Only the top groups around the state were invited to perform. So representing the Redwood High School Chamber Singers, we have Abigail Ray and Bryn Lee Travis. And representing the Redwood High School Chamber Orchestra, we have Xander Sessena Caballero, Erin Kimball, and Tara Casade. All right. So we'll take a picture here. With the Dance Force, we have Michelle Lap. And again, making a second appearance here, Redwood Orchestra, Rodney Yakota, Elijah Avila. Congratulations and good luck this spring. VAPA families, if you want to go celebrate where your students, go ahead and follow them out. Don't forget a QR code there for the free pictures later. And to continue on with the rest of the board meeting, I want to invite back up Administrator of School Leadership, Ms. Serrato.
Thank you so much. We've got such talent. I appreciate all the hard work and parents, again, they need your support at home and appreciate all the time that you put in taking them from all their competitions and just supporting them throughout their high school and careers. We want to move on to action taken in closed session, and we had a lot of work in closed session. So some of this is from our Board Workshop, and I will read out each one of these. So in closed session, on a motion by Board Member Viegas and a second by Board Member Gabey, the Board agreed unanimously to approve an agreement with employee number 11435. In closed session, on a motion by Board Member Gamoyen and a second by Board Member Viegas, the Board agreed unanimously, 7-0, to appoint Kimberly Nelson to the position of Administrator of Accountability and Advisory. Kimberly Nelson currently serves as the Principal of El Diamante High School. Ms. Nelson began her career in education as an English teacher at Manachi High School, where she taught for a year. She was then hired with VUSD to teach English at Mount Whitney High School, where she taught for two years. Her teaching career landed her at Farmersville High School, where she taught English, served as an avid director and ELD Coordinator for 16 years before returning to VUSD as a teacher on special assignment. Prior to her current role, Ms. Nelson served as an Assistant Principal at El Diamante High School for three years. Ms. Nelson holds a Bachelor of Arts in English with a minor in History from the University of California Santa Barbara, and she holds a Master of Arts in Educational Leadership from Brandman University. She holds a single subject teaching credential and an Administrative Services credential. On behalf of the trustees, congratulations to Ms. Kimberly Nelson. In closed session, again, on a motion by Board Member Gabey and a second by Board Member Odo, the Board agreed unanimously to appoint Lori Dirksen to the position of Director of Special Education. Lori Dirksen has served Visalia Unified for a total of 28 years. She currently serves as the Coordinator of STEM. She started her career with VUSD as an Ed Specialist at La Jolla Middle School and has held various roles since. She served as a mathematics teacher at La Jolla Middle School and Golden West High School, an assessment specialist for special education at Golden West High School, and a teacher on special assignment secondary mathematics. Prior to her current role, Ms. Dirksen held positions as the Assistant Principal of Denton Elementary and La Jolla Middle School. Ms. Dirksen began her career in education serving as a special education teacher for Albuquerque Public Schools and taught special education for Tulare County Office of Education for two years. Ms. Dirksen holds a Bachelor of Science in Special Education with a minor in Social Science from the University of New Mexico and a Master of Mathematics Education from Fresno Pacific University. She holds a multiple subject teaching credential, a supplemental credential in mathematics, and an Administrative Services credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Ms. Lori Dirksen. Again, in closed session, on a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member Viegas, the Board agreed unanimously to appoint Angelina Gonzalez Thomas to the position of Director of Student Services. Angelina Gonzalez Thomas has served Visalia Unified for a total of 14 years. Ms. Gonzalez Thomas has served the district in various roles, including an English teacher at Green Acres Middle School, Assistant Principal at Crestwood Elementary School, Valley Oak Middle School, and Golden West High School, and is currently serving as the Principal of Goshen Elementary. Ms. Gonzalez Thomas holds a Bachelor of Arts in African American Studies and a Bachelor of Arts in English from California State University Fresno. She received a Master of Arts in Teaching from Bard College and a Master of Education in Educational Leadership from California State University Fresno. She holds a single subject teaching credential in English and an Administrative Services credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Ms. Angelina Gonzalez Thomas. In closed session, on a motion by Board Member Gamoyen and a second by Board Member Belt, the Board agreed unanimously to appoint Dr. Terry Martindale to the position of Administrator of School Leadership. Terry Martindale currently serves as the Administrator of Equity and Student Services. Prior to her current role, Terry served as the Director of Equity and Student Services for two years. Before joining Visalia Unified, she worked for Tulare City School District for 29 years, where she served as an elementary school teacher, a middle school vice principal, and an elementary principal, a middle school principal, and the Director of Leadership and Support. Ms. Martindale has also served as adjunct faculty for Fresno Pacific University and National University. Dr. Martindale holds a Bachelor of Arts in Liberal Studies from California State University Fresno and a Master of Arts in Education from Fresno Pacific University. She holds a doctoral degree in Educational Leadership and Management from Alliant International University Fresno. She holds a Reading and Language Arts Specialist Credential and an Administrative Services Credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Dr. Martindale. And for tonight, in our closed session, on a motion by Board Member Gamoyen and a second by Board Member Belt, the Board agreed unanimously to appoint Joshua Baki to the position of Administrator of Human Resources Development. Mr. Joshua Baki was recently served as a Talent and HR Consultant, where he has provided HR consultation to business leaders. Prior to his consultancy work, Mr. Baki held positions as the Interim Manager, Organizational Excellence, and Human Resources Consultant at California State University Fresno. He also worked at the University of Southern California, Los Angeles, as a Talent Manager of University Succession Planning. He has done work at the USC Marshall School of Business in the roles of Associate Director of Talent Management and Assistant Director of Human Resources. Early in his career, Mr. Baki served as an Admissions Counselor, Associate Director of Undergraduate Admissions, Marketing and Manager of Training and Development at Biola University. Mr. Baki holds a Bachelor of Arts in Radio, Television, and Film from Biola University and a Master of Arts in Psychology from Pepperdine University Graduate School of Education and Psychology. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Mr. Joshua Baki. Again, in closed session, on a motion by Board Member DeYoung and a second by Board Member Odo, the Board agreed unanimously to approve resolution of release and reassignment of certificated administrators listed as follows. Employee 13087, 15768, and 14574. In closed session, on a motion by Board Member Gabey and a second by Board Member Odo, the Board agreed unanimously to approve resolution of non-relection of probationary certificate employees listed as follows. Employee ID 25070, 24851, 22761, 25021, 18845, and 24192. In closed session, on a motion by Board Member Gabey and a second by Board Member Odo, the Board agreed unanimously to approve resolution of non-reemployment and non-relection of probationary certified administrative employee listed as follows. Employee ID 24842. In closed session, on a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member DeYoung, the Board agreed unanimously to approve the settlement agreement for case number VCU294247. And that's it. Moving right along. There are some revised item enclosures, number 4.1, 4.2, 7.2, 7.23, and 7.24, tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the board meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Odo and seconded by Board Member Belt, call for the vote.
Motion by Viegas.
Whoop, I'm sorry. Thank you. Call for the vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Student member votes yes.
Focus on student learning. Spotlight on good things happening in the district. Presenter Superintendent Kirk Schrum.
Thank you, President Naylor, board members, and what a fun evening when we continue the recognitions of the amazing things that our students, our employees, and our community do every day for our school system. And so, congratulations to all of our athletic and VAPA award winners. And then, we have academic and other pieces coming up here in just a little bit. So a great night, and of course, to our LD Chamber Orchestra as well. So so much talent, it's hard to fit it into just a few hours at a board meeting. So hopefully, members of our community have the opportunity to attend these great events that happen all across our campuses all throughout the year. So as we talk about the spotlight on good things happening, we're going to begin tonight with our focus on Black History Month. Many of our schools celebrated Black History Month in February, lots of different ways, lesson plans, activities, other events. A couple we're highlighting here. On the left, we have El Diamante High School held lunchtime activities, jewelry making, poetry performing, dance showcases. And then, we also see here Mountain View Elementary, where students had a specialized lesson around Black History Month, but every class completed a lesson on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and compiled a list of their dreams for their future. We live in such a diverse community, it's important to make sure that we make sure every student is seen. And so, thank you to all of our sites that participated in Black History Month activities. National Future Farmers of America Week was also held recently in February, and we know many of our schools also marked the occasion with fun-filled activities. And want to take a moment, our FFA chapters typically are state and nationally recognized, and so we've had them up in front of the board on multiple occasions. I just want to take a moment to recognize all of our FFA teams, their staff, the students, and the families who make great things happen. We're really proud of what they do across all of our campuses. Engaging our American Indian students, last month, we participated in an all-day event at College of Sequoia, Native Young Gathering. This event offered Native American students the opportunity to learn about available resources at the College of Sequoia, including informative workshops, career assessment to explore future career paths, and a campus tour. Students enjoyed lunch while engaging with students from other schools in the area. National History Day, also in February, the Tulare County Office of Education hosts this event, where students showcase their presentation on any historical issue, idea, people, or events. Finalist projects were selected to move on to the state competition, included students from our very own Goshen Elementary, Ridgeview Middle, and Redwood High School. Congratulations to these students, and I especially appreciate the teachers and principals that take advantage of these many events that are sponsored through the county and throughout our state. Family Night, events held across at many of our schools, we're spotlighting here, we have Annie R. Mitchell Family Night, where the PTA hosted a family skate night last month. Around 250 parents and students attended the event, so that's a great turnout. So congratulations to them. Crowley Avid, which is called our Advancement via Individual Determination Program, attended a Higher Education Day at Fresno State. The Avid program provides students with opportunities to learn about colleges and experiencing college life. So 64 through 6th grade students from Crowley attended this day at Fresno State, where they enjoyed a basketball game and dinner at the Save Mart Center. This experience was made possible through advanced learning, opportunity funds available to our sites. All of our schools, especially at the elementary level, participate in I-Ready, which is an assessment and also an academic tool. And frequently throughout the year, they recognize students who have reached certain benchmarks in that program. And so here, we see a couple of schools and their celebrations, including Annie R. Mitchell for students who met their I-Ready goals. Over 550 students enjoyed a popcorn party. And at Oak Grove, we see here students who demonstrated achievement, and they got to tape their principal to the wall. So I'm sure he enjoyed that very much. And congratulations to those schools and many of our schools who host these events to recognize our students. That's something I heard from my student advisory. My elementary advisory in particular wanted to make sure that we had opportunities for students to be recognized at all of our campuses, and that actually is now one of our strategic plan actions coming directly from what our student advisories said they wanted to see more of. So excited to see this continue at our schools. We had Read Across America, of course, also happens in March, and many of our schools celebrate this week. They have guest readers, they do read-a-thons, lots of other events that happen. We had elected officials, law enforcement, community leaders, several of our board members and staff took time out of their schedules to read to our elementary students. It's events like this that showcase the best of our community and highlight the importance of literacy. Speaking of our community, very fortunate in Visalia that we have a very supportive community for our students and our schools. Incredible partners, and a couple presented here, Rawhide and Allen Law Firm sponsored over 250 kids from Houston Elementary to go to the Enchanted Playhouse Theater Company's performance of Tinker Bell last month. Great opportunity for students to be exposed to experiences they might not otherwise have. At Oak Grove, we see ASB students in conjunction with the school counselor and our Community and Family Resource Center, parenting network organization, partner to run a diaper drive to collect diapers, wipes, and formulas for families in need. Nearly 700 items were donated. Continuing our spotlight, one of the things also, again, that we heard from our teachers and others is, how do we make sure students are equipped for the next grade? And so you see a couple of examples here, we're going to be sharing more later this spring of how we're enhancing and building upon this for especially our elementary, pre-K into kindergarten. But here, you see here our 6th and 8th grade preview days. By the end of April, all incoming 7th and 9th graders will have visited their school that they'll be going to, middle or high school, to learn about programs, clubs, and other information. And this is really important, I was able to see this at one of the elementary schools where the middle school came down, and it was students who were presenting this information to the students who will be coming, which I think is even more powerful about what you need to do to make it through successfully, but also all the other exciting things that are available as you move through the system. Proud again of our sites who have taken many of our initiatives and have said, you know, we're going to do this, and we're going to do it so well, we're going to reach the gold standard, we're going to be recognized for this work. We just don't want to do it, we want to do it the best we can. And so continuing this work, we're proud, we have a couple of schools join us now with their PLC work. And so, proud to share that Global Learning Charter received the Promising Practices Award from Solution Tree. This award is earned through a commitment to the PLC at Work Process and clear evidence of improved student learning. So I'm glad to see that list growing and can't wait to see all of our schools receiving that gold standard of practice. Speaking of that, state recognitions, this has been in the newspaper, again, extremely proud of our schools here. Both Crete Side and Sequoia were honored by the California Department of Education as Model Community Day School and a Model Continuation High School respectively. Both schools were one of only two in Tulare County to be recognized for this category, and also proud to announce that over the weekend, La Jolla Middle School received the California Schools to Watch Award by the California League of Educators, which is also supported by the California Department of Education. Congratulations to these schools for their hard-earned success. An event I love, I've told many of our students who are in this program, I myself was, and I didn't win an award, but I was in mock trial in high school for what that matters. So we're really proud to see this great event across our schools. Our teams always do exceptionally well here. Congratulations for several of our students as we move on with their successes. You might remember mock trial happening during the night of our last board meeting. So we have a little update here, Redwood narrowly defeated Golden West in the county competition, moving on to the state competition this month. Also worthy of note, two Redwood students took home the top award for courtroom artist. You can see those up on the screen. So it's not just students who are portraying the role of a witness or a lawyer, but all the other things that are associated with trials as well as the artistry there. So congratulations to these individuals for their successful year, and we can't wait for another competition next year. Our Future Business Leaders of America, another great program and event we have across our schools. 124 FBLA students participated in the Central Section Leadership Conference. 26 schools from across the valley traveled to Turlock to participate in the competition. For the 40th time in school history in 12 years in a row, Redwood FBLA brought home the Doris Lowe Sweepstakes Title. Additionally, 18 students placed in the top 10 twice, and 80 students will be attending the state competition. Congratulations to these students. And also continuing our spotlight on our student success, really proud of this partnership we have with National Education Equity Lab, which sponsors dual enrollment courses with universities across the nation. And so, we're able to bring those professors in, facilitated by one of our very own teachers. by one of our very own teachers, depending on the class. And one of the things that they do each year is they celebrate students for being in the top 20% of scholars nationwide enrolled in these courses. These courses are taught by college instructors. Students receive college credit for their class. We have two classes. We have a class at Mount Whitney and a class at Golden West. One is cloud computing, and the other is Introduction to Sociology. And again, now there are thousands of students across the nation participating in this same class. So this makes this recognition even more outstanding. So we have 13 students from Mount Whitney and Golden West who were recognized as being in the top 20% of students nationwide taking this class. And a couple of our students were in the top 5%. So their futures are very bright. Not only are they receiving college credit, but this is, they're on par, you know, top 20% of students all across the nation taking these same classes. So really proud to see this program continue in our district and continue to grow. Our Science Olympiad, over the weekend, middle and high school students competed in the annual Science Olympiad. Proud to report that Green Acres and Ridgeview Middle took first and second place and are headed to state. Redwood and Golden West placed first and fourth and will advance to the NorCal competition. Congratulations to these students and teachers. Moving on to sports, proud to see the dedication of our students and staff and families at our ELOP tournaments. These happen every quarter. And so now we've had our second now annual volleyball championship that was held at Ridgeview Middle School. And in the final, Houston defeated Highland in what was a thrilling game to earn the championship. So congratulations to Houston, and I'm sure they see him there brought home a trophy. Pursuing Victory with Honor, recently downtown Visalia Kiwanis, another great partner, participated with TCOE in this winter's Pursuing Victory with Honor for Student Athletes. These are students that are nominated by their coaches for sportsmanship and are awarded a certificate patch and lawn side that reads, "An Athlete of Character Lives Here." Two students from each conference of high school received an award for a total of eight students in basketball, soccer, and wrestling. At Visalia Unified, kindness is part of our yearly campaign, so it's great to see these students celebrated for their character. We saw this individual earlier and wanted to make sure we spotlighted it. It's not every day we have a state championship team or individual. And so we want to recognize Chris Kreisman, who won the state championship in his weight class. He makes history, as we heard earlier, as the first wrestler from LD Amante to achieve this remarkable feat. Congratulations to Chris. I don't think he's still here, but just when, we saw him earlier. So following in some family footsteps, I believe. Spotlight on Visual and Performing Arts, LD Amante premiered Little Shop of Horrors. It was great. Global Learning Charter students participated in ELOP and Winnie the Pooh for families and friends. And we're excited these opportunities for our students from elementary through high school. And one of the great things about our extended learning program is students have opportunities to participate in these type of events now way before and might find out they have a love for acting or something like that and are able to pursue that when they get into middle school and high school. Also, we saw this group earlier, but we want to recognize Redwood Dance Force for their advancing toward the U.S. Nationals. They secured first place in both hip-hop, medium lyrical, and third place in small lyrical. Their captains also earned as a top 10 senior soloist event. Congratulations to this team. And again, we saw them a little bit earlier. Spotlight on the District, our student advisories continue. We see here our high school students most recently were in person, and our elementary and middle were on Zoom. And I think next month, all will be here in person. And currently, and we'll hear a report here in a little bit, but our student advisories are working on giving feedback around the actions that are in our strategic plan. And I mentioned a little bit of that feedback a little while ago, and those are all things that are going to help us build out our strategic plan. Many actions within our strategic plan are focused on our student and family and community connectiveness to our schools. Want to recognize some of our staff. Diana Garcia was honored as CTE Teacher of the Year by the Tulare King College and Career Collaborative. Dennis Deek was recognized as a Rising Star in Communications by the California Schools Public Relations Association. By the way, our communications team brought home eight awards from their conference where they also held and presented a couple of presentations. Congratulations to you both. Way to represent Visalia Unified. So I'm not sure if they're here, but give them a round of applause. Appreciate. Now, another group you don't necessarily always hear from unless things go really, really bad, just make a little joke there. We're very fortunate to have an unbelievably talented financial team in our district. And so once again, for the second year in a row, our budget team received the Pathway to the MBA Award presented by the Association of School Business Officials International. This award promotes and recognizes best budget presentations across school districts. I want to thank not only our board for providing us with sound budget policies, but also to our budget team who worked diligently to provide our board with the information and materials they need to make those decisions. Congratulations, team. If we have members of that budget team here, if you, if you want to stand real quick, I'm not sure if we do, but I want to make sure we, we recognize you. I can tell you this takes a lot of work, and this is important because this is about best practices around making these practices visible to community. And I believe, I haven't looked this year, but I believe last year, the only two districts in the area that, to receive this were us and Clovis. And so really proud of that. We'll see. But this is, you know, a huge honor for this team, and to receive it two years in a row is just outstanding. So congratulations to, to them. Continuing with our observances this month, we have Arts Education in California, Youth Art, Art Month, Music in Our Schools, School Nutrition Month, National Women's History Month, Read Across America Week, School Breakfast Week, and Caesar Chavez Day. And we'll have, of course, spotlights on those events in our next spotlight. Social media, Power School Messenger, President's Day, Step Into Leadership, were some of the messages. Helps if I do the screen there. And then continuing, we had state recognition for Sequoia and Creekside, National FFA Week, and TK Enrollment. Continuing with our social media, we had High Fry Fridays, this time was at Hurley Elementary, Read Across America Day, and Women's History Month. TK Open House for incoming 25, 26 students and families. Yes, it's that time. National Nutrition Month and School Breakfast Week, and Say Something Week. It's a busy month in the spring. Also, California Arbor Week, CSAC Student Aid, and Spring Forward Reminder. Hope everybody enjoyed that and did that successfully. So that concludes our spotlight. A lot of amazing things happening in our schools and across our district. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. That's a lot. Appreciate that.
If I may ask, Superintendent Schrum, as you make your way back to your seat, I loved all the activities highlighting Black History Month, and I was wondering if we had any update on the potential renaming of a building at Redwood High School in honor of Mr. Edmund and Arthur Weisinger? And for those of you who don't know, those were two individuals back in the late 1800s who fought against school segregation here in California and who really paved the way for all of our students to be able to share a classroom space together. So I was just curious if we had any updates on that?
Yes, that process has been continuing following our board policy and administrative regulations. So the last update I got us, my anticipation is that that will happen this semester.
Thank you.
Any board comments? Comments? Okay, moving on to 4.2, 2025, 2026 Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Presenter is Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, Andy DeMaio.
Thank you, Board President Naylor, Superintendent Schrum, board members. Thank you again for allowing me a bit more of your time to talk this evening about a really exciting program we have in our district, and I want to talk to you a bit about what you can anticipate for the coming school year. So the school board has worked very diligently the last few years, really clarifying and stating publicly what we believe and where our beliefs come from. And I'm happy to say that the ELOP campaign definitely lives in all of these areas. What I want to show you tonight is how that actually looks. So a little bit that we're going to hear about tonight is really reminding us again what ELOP is, where it came from, why the state wanted it, felt it was important, what it currently looks like, what our families are telling us, and most importantly, what we can anticipate for the years to come. So just as some reminders, and I pulled this language from the Department of Education to just really remind us what the why behind ELOP is. And remember, this was created right after the COVID pandemic we had. The state recognized that our students were suffering, and we wanted to see an opportunity for them to extend the school day and the school year. And the ELOP campaign was designed to do that by offering creative programming with lots of parental input from our own community. Further, we have to create programming that enhances the school day, not just replicate or duplicate what the kids are already seeing. And most importantly, we have to create options that our families are asking for. And what's really exciting to note is, one of the components of this is the state requires us to really review data. And we can't continue to be doing programming that's not showing it's giving us the results we want or that the community is looking for. So this graph you're looking at is going to show you a couple different things. Now, the yellow bars are going to indicate for you over the last three years that we've had the ELOP campaign going. The number of different courses that students took advantage of, because in the after-school program now, our students can participate in more than one program offering a day. The blue bar is going to show you the number of actual students that are participating. So basically what this is showing you is, the first year ELOP started, we had about 2,000 students participating in the after-school program. And they were enjoying about 3,000 different offerings, right? Over the three years, we have seen those numbers grow tremendously. Now, we have over 9,000 student offerings, meaning they're taking 9,000 different courses, and we have over 5,000 students who are participating in the ELOP program. What's most exciting is that represents 33% of all the students in our TK through 6th grade schools are involved in our after-school programs in one way or the other. So that tells us that they're enjoying what they're seeing. Another important statistic we want to look at is chronic absenteeism. And just as a reminder, board, you know that the state identifies chronic absenteeism is any child that has missed more than 10% of the school year at any given time. Coming out of the pandemic, we knew that our numbers, and this wasn't just Visalia Unified, this happened across the state. We were at almost 40% of our population was experiencing that, that absence from school. We know if kids aren't in school, they're not going to learn. So we've worked really hard focusing on that. I'm happy to say that last year, we were just a little bit above 20%, and we are trending lower than that. So we're looking to see those numbers go even below that. Now, why? I can't say that ELOP is the reason for all of that, but I can tell you that the data we're receiving both from school sites and our community is telling us that our students are coming to school. One of the reasons is because they want to take advantage of those after-school programs. So we're really excited about that. Another thing that I wanted to just share with you is what does it currently look like? So again, I shared with you earlier that on any given day, we have over 5,000 students that are participating across our 26 elementary sites, our middle schools, and our high schools. Now, what this is showing you is that the ELOP funding, thanks to what we've been able to do, these are the type of program offerings that our students are able to participate in right now. You see things like robotics, VAPA-type things, theater, agricultural dance, et cetera, et cetera. Our families have told us those were the types of things they were interested in seeing. And our students every day get to see those different type of experiences. And not only that, we've also been able to set up opportunities like on weekends. So we do lots of different type of sporting events. We do culminating events for the theater program, for our health science academies, chances for students and their families to engage in what's happening at school with them, with their families and the communities during our off times. But this is the exciting thing I wanted to just share. You know, we, a component of this campaign is to really make sure that we are getting the feedback from our families to make sure that the offerings we're providing are what they'd like to see. So I've just shared with you a few of those quotes that I thought were really cool that talk to us about why the ELOP campaign is important. So you're going to see some statements up that are talking about perhaps some students who are receiving special education supports. The ELOP campaign takes care of all of our students. Anybody who would like to join us is able to join, and they do so in ways that they really like it. You'll see that parents are noting that it's helping the creativity come out, their children are enjoying coming to school, it's building their confidence. Those are all great things that encourage us to continue the things we're doing and seek opportunities to make it even better in the future. So now what I wanted to talk just a little bit about is what's coming in the future. So again, as the law is suggesting to us, is they want to continue to see us growing and supporting this, this campaign. I'm really excited to see that the state of California is continuing to sponsor the ELOP campaign. They're continuing to fund these endeavors. So because of that, we've been able to go a little bit further and find out, well, what other types of programs is our community interested in? Families, what type of things where your children want to take part in? So this year, we did it a little bit differently. We asked our community to let us know what type of events would they be interested in providing for us. And then we created a vendor fair. At the vendor fair, our sites were able to come in and determine based on their site data and what their own school community is looking for, which of these programs would best fit the needs of their particular school sites. So school board members, a little bit later tonight, you're going to be asked to consider some of the contracts for these vendors that will allow us to kind of move into, into some additional things. Now, that doesn't mean we're not going to be utilizing our wonderful partnerships we already have, right? Pro Youth is a great partner we have, our Alevo Sports Team. A lot of what's currently great will continue, and we're just going to be adding to it. So really excited about these opportunities for our kids to see. And again, this is based on what the school sites have said. This is what we need for our kids to be excited about our after-school programming. And that's at the elementary level. Another part of the law talks about the secondary programs. Now, the law says as long as you have a robust offering at the elementary level, you could use some of your ELOP funds for secondary. And we've got a great program in elementary, so we've been able to expand to our secondary sites. So next year, what we're going to be seeing is more of the types of things you saw that I just shared at the elementary level, offerings for the middle schools based on their own individual needs. Another thing I want to point out that we're really excited about, Creekside is our school that we have in our school district that supports students who need a little bit extra. This year, we're going to be offering a very unique summer program for those students to help get them reconnected to the school system so that when they start school in the fall, they'll be better prepared to be successful. And then, of course, we're partnering with our Advanced Learning Department here in the district to make sure that not only are the programs we're offering fun and exciting and enriching, but also advances the standards that California State encourages us to do so. So again, super excited about the coming year. This is going to be wonderful things are going to be happening, and I just again, wanted to share with you what we have coming. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any community response? How about board member?
I just want to say thank you, especially with the programming at Creekside. I'm really excited about that. I remember years ago having the conversation of how do we keep kids connected to schools and then reconnected to schools in this case. And so hearing that we're going to be having summer offerings and after-school programs there just really warms my heart and excites me. So, thank you.
And I appreciate, that vendor fair is a very cool idea about site differentiation. They know their kids probably best, and that's very cool that they can come and choose from that. That was a great addition.
I just want to say, I want to go back to elementary school because I'm looking at these classes. I'm thinking, wow, wish I had that when I was young. Any other board comment? Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. Okay, I'd like to now, we're going to move on to Student Achievement Awards, 5.1. And that would be Administrator of School Leadership, Liz Serrato.
Good evening, Board President Naylor, board members, and Superintendent Kirk Schrum. I'm Elizabeth Serrato, Administrator of School Leadership, and tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing outstanding high school students in the areas of English, oral language, and citizenship growth. The board will also recognize the United Student Association of Visalia, USAV, Winter Student of the Season. USAV consists of Visalia Unified School District Secondary students dedicated to the improving educational programs and representing student views to the Board of Education. These students represent the best of the best from our schools in the areas for which they have been selected, and we are very proud of them for their accomplishments and for how they represent their schools and our district. Each of them is certainly worthy of this special recognition tonight. But before we begin, I would like to first recognize and thank the parents and families of each of these outstanding students. Your support and encouragement is valued and appreciated. I would also like to recognize I would also like to recognize and thank their teachers and school staff who have supported their learning and successes. All of us share pride in the accomplishment of these students. We are very happy to be able to take time tonight to honor the students and hear about their accomplishments. Students, you will receive a medal as part of this recognition, which you are invited to wear at your commencement ceremony. Our communications team created a card with a QR code that you, as a parent, can pick up at the table at the end, or if you have it, so that you can access pictures from this event. At this time, Yolanda Monzaveiz, Assistant Principal Sequoia High School, will get us started.
Are you going to come and say hi to me?
No.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to recognize the following students for the overall student achievement award. My first student unfortunately could not be here, but I do want to recognize her, and she was nominated by Ms. Kovarubia as her academic counselor. Leila is a dedicated, goal-oriented student who excels academically, consistently earning a 95 to 107% in her classes, while actively working on edge annuity. Her teachers describe her as creative, kind-hearted, considerate, and resilient. Leila is determined to pursue a degree in the medical field and appreciates the fresh start Sequoia High School has provided her. She embodies the Sequoia's strong spirit, and her teachers are incredibly proud of her accomplishments and character. Next, I have Jacob Chavez, who was nominated by his academic counselor, Mrs. Gonzalez. Jacob has consistently demonstrated hard work, dedication, and a positive attitude throughout his tenure at Sequoia. With excellent attendance and a strong commitment to success, Jacob has shown great improvement and achievement in all aspects of his studies. According to his teachers, Jacob is not only hardworking, but also a supportive classmate, always encouraging others to contribute to a positive classroom environment. Jacob's drive, work ethic, and upbeat personality make him a true asset to Sequoia. We at Sequoia are excited to see his continued success. My next two students are being nominated for the USAV Student of the Season Award. Amy Santa Maria. Amy was nominated by Mrs. Duarte, her ASB teacher, for her excellent leadership and creativity. As an active member of ASB, Amy's explorative nature has flourished, and she is recognized as a strong communicator and leader among her peers. She's participated in various school events, including FFA, the Academy of First Responders, and the Forestry Challenge in San Bernardino just this last semester. Amy plans to attend COS, transfer to Fresno State to earn her veterinary degree, and transfer to UC Davis with a focus in livestock. She embodies the Sequoia's strong spirit as a leader and positive influencer. My next student is Israel Solorsano. Israel was nominated, oh, go ahead. Israel was nominated by his biology teacher, Mrs. Pacheco, for his excellent qualities. After arriving at Sequoia High School at the end of last year, Israel quickly earned a reputation as a smart, humorous, and helpful student. He is considerate, outgoing, and known for thinking outside the box, which earns him the respect from his peers. Israel is a passionate student working towards pursuing a certificate in welding at COS. He is living the Sequoia's strong spirit, flourishing and leading with creativity and positivity.
Now, I would like to call to the boardroom principal, Ms. Tami Olsen.
Good evening. Tonight, VICELIA Adult School would like to recognize Monica Huerta. Since her very first day enrolling in our high school equivalency program, Monica has worked diligently at keeping her attendance consistent and making progress in her studies. Even when life has thrown some speed bumps and some brick walls, she has persevered through these issues and displays amazing dedication to her studies. She just informed me she just passed her science test, which that makes number four, so all she has left now is math. So congratulations, and keep up the great work, Monica. And next, I would like to recognize Javier Leon. Javier is not only present, but engaging in every EL lesson that he's in his class. He comes to class with a smile and collaborates with his peers on a deep level. He takes his education very seriously, but also isn't afraid to laugh and enjoy the English language learning process. He's been here for a year in America. Javier states his goal is to work on speaking English better. He practices anytime that he can, at home, with watching videos, and at school. Javier owns an organic fertilizer business and wants to build his English to be stronger so that he can do more with his business and communicate with potential customers on his own. Congratulations, Javier.
Good evening. Tonight, we will start with our two overall academic achievement award winners from VICELIA Charter Independent Study. First tonight, we have Julia Gonzalez. Julia is a true eagle, attending VCIS since her freshman year. She is a bright, independent worker who is going to be an amazing mental health therapist. Julia is ranked number one in her class with a 4.19 GPA. She plans to major in psychology and also study sociology and has already pursued many courses in these fields at COS. Outside of school, she loves playing the guitar, dancing, writing, film, and photography. She would like to explore more college courses in these areas of interest. We look forward to all the amazing things Julia is going to accomplish in life. All right. Our second overall academic achievement award recipient tonight is Mr. John Watley. It truly is an honor to provide this academic achievement award to John. He has worked very hard to overcome any obstacle in his way to achieve this outstanding academic success. He is a hard worker and is very conscientious in everything he does. He is qualified for lifetime membership in CSF and is graduating in the top 5% of his class. In fact, John graduated today at VCIS. John is a significant presence on the VCIS campus with his friendly greeting and pleasant attitude to students and staff each and every day. His love for learning and his future goal to become a school librarian to help students is amazing, and we couldn't be more proud. All right. Tonight, for our first recipient for the USAV award, we have Ms. Leslie Mraz. Leslie has been a dedicated student at VCIS since her freshman year, embodying the true spirit of, sorry, a spirit of a true eagle. This year, she is enrolled in the CNA Certified Nursing Assistant Program and taking a medical terminology class through COS to pursue her career goals in the medical field. Known for her bright smile, helpfulness, and friendly nature, Leslie excels academically. Her ability to absorb and discuss complex topics during teacher meetings is truly impressive. She is highly deserving of this award. And to round us out tonight, for our second recipient for the USAV award, Mr. Amos Bell Amos has been a student at VCIS since his freshman year, making him a true eagle. He has progressed from beginning to advanced dance and is involved in acting, dancing, stage design and technology, and marine biology at VCIS. Yes, we have all those things at Independent Study. Outside of school, Amos enjoys family time and volunteering with programs like Campo Creativo. He plans to pursue a career in the biomedical field, focusing on robots and medicine. Amos is joy to have and is a true leader, and we look forward to seeing all he accomplishes in the future. And next this evening, we have Mr. Scott Braun from VTEC High School.
Good evening. I'm excited to present the VTEC's USAV Winter Award tonight to celebrate Julia Landeros. She is a shining example of what it means to be fierce. Arriving from Hanford as a 10th grader, she embraced opportunity, completing nine COS classes, earning the seal of biliteracy, and excelling as a CSF lifetime member and Spanish Club leader. As a salutatorian and bulldog-bound, she was the first in her family to attend college, and she was accepted into the MAP program as a junior. Julia's future as a social worker is bright, and her heart for others makes VTEC proud. I have other VTEC Wolverines that we will celebrate at VTEC, but I'd like to congratulate And next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brandon Gridiron from Redwood.
Good evening, everyone. So our first student is Riley Solis, representing our English department. Our English department nominated Riley because she is an outstanding student who's deeply engaged in class and genuinely is invested in learning. She's a joy to have as a student and consistently goes above and beyond in all assignments. She's a positive energy and always aims to support her peers. Join me congratulating Riley Solis. Our next student couldn't be here with us tonight, but I would like to read her recognition, and she's being nominated from our oral language department, and that is Kaylee Menchanca Ramirez. Kaylee is an AP Spanish Language and Culture student who exemplifies the qualities of an active and engaged language learner. While Spanish is her first language, Kaylee consistently strives to refine her grammar and expand her academic vocabulary, enabling her to express her thoughts and ideas with greater precision. She frequently contributes to class discussions, thoughtfully asks clarifying questions to ensure deep understanding, and she even shares stories from class with her family, which often leads to deeper conversations and connections and an experience for which she is truly grateful. Congratulations, Kaylee. Our next student is Isabella Ambrose. Isabella has shown remarkable growth in both her responsibilities and personal citizenship. Through dedication and perseverance, excuse me, she has made significant improvements in her attendance and academics. Performance demonstrating her commitment to success, she maintains open communication with her academy principal, meeting to discuss her progress and ensure she's on track. Beyond academics, Isabella serves as an office aide for athletic director, taking on responsibilities that showcase her reliability and leadership. Her journey has been one of resilience. After transferring schools, she has returned with a strong focus and has excelled ever since. Join me congratulating Isabella Ambrose. Our first USAV Student of the Season is Ms. Taylor Langford. Taylor has been named United Students Association of VICELIA USAV Winter Student of the Season. As ASB president and an active member of multiple clubs, she leads with honesty, heart, and dedication. Taylor excels in academics, leadership, and campus involvement, always striving to make positive impact. She proudly represents Redwood at school board and PTSA meetings, embodying the spirit of a true Ranger. We are grateful for her commitment and leadership, and I just learned tonight that Taylor was accepted to TCU's nursing program. And our last and final student, who couldn't also be here tonight, is Xavier Legaski. Xavier has been named the United Students Association of VICELIA USAV Winter Student of the Season as well. He leads with quiet confidence, always leading by example and going above and beyond to support others. Xavier dedicates countless hours to helping classmates, ensuring school activities are the best they can be. His kindness, humor, and strong work ethic makes a lasting impact on those around him. Though young, his actions and leadership speak volumes. We are lucky to have him as an ASB student. And I would like to introduce Ms. Kimberly Nelson from El Diamante High School.
Good evening. El Diamante's outstanding English student is Diego Medina Gutierrez. Diego excels in analytical and creative writing, but his ability to ask thought-provoking questions truly stands out. His insightful contributions spark enthusiasm in class discussions. Beyond academics, Diego has taken on rigorous courses, mastering the curriculum with impressive test scores. He has also significantly impacted campus life, serving as our ASB president, leading clubs like CSF and Key Club, and excelling in water polo and swimming. A humble leader and mentor, Diego inspires others through his dedication and example. And I'm proud to add that Diego will be attending Stanford in the fall. I am proud to present Diego as El Diamante's outstanding student in English. The outstanding student in oral language is Fatima Gutierrez-Badia. Fatima, the proud daughter of immigrant parents and sister to five siblings, has been a dedicated El Diamante High El Diamante High School student since her freshman year. She has excelled in all her Spanish classes, including Spanish IV AP, and is currently enrolled in Spanish V AP Literature and Culture. Fatima consistently demonstrates strong academic skills and cultural awareness by engaging with complex material and sharing her insights. She actively participates in the Spanish Club and is deeply committed to her heritage. I am proud to present Fatima as El Diamante's High School Outstanding Student in World Winter USAV Student of the Season is Sarah Glasscock. Sarah is a dedicated student leader. She has earned this honor for her service to the students of El Diamante as part of the ASB Social Media Team. A natural leader, Sarah understands the importance of service and the positive influence student leaders can have on their peers. Her future plans in sports medicine are testament to her ambition and potential. I'm honored to present Sarah as the USAV Student of the Season. The other Winter USAV Student of the Season is Alyssa Ibarra. Alyssa, an exceptional leader at El Diamante, has earned this honor for her effort to ensure the smooth running of events. Alyssa enjoys activities where she gets to help students directly. She embodies all the core values of the El Diamante Leadership Program: respect, kindness, and inclusivity. Alyssa's quiet leadership, leading by example, is a powerful demonstration of the influence one can have. After graduation, Alyssa plans to attend COS. I am very proud to present Alyssa as the USAV Student of the Season. We have a few other outstanding minors who cannot be here this evening, but I'll definitely honor them at the school site. It's now my pleasure to introduce Principal, the Principal of Golden West, De Michael Lambert.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to discuss these amazing trailblazers with the audience and the board. Our first award winner is for the English department, that's Janay Vega. Janay is a dedicated and kind student who consistently exceeds high standards, particularly in college-level English. She demonstrates growth in her writing and discussions, mastering all of her assignments. Her love of learning drives her to go above and beyond expectation, showcasing creativity and originality. Janay also supports her peers with assignments showing unmatched compassion. She is a leader both in the classroom and beyond, consistently pushing herself and others to excel. Our next recipient is from World Language, and that is Judith Contreras-Magana. Judith is a dedicated and focused student, always prepared and striving to excel. She fosters positive relationships with her peers, motivating them to reach their potential. Her continuous pursuit of improvement and infectious positive energy create an uplifting environment. With an optimistic outlook of her future, Judith is truly deserving of this award. Our next award winner is for Citizenship, and that is Ray Vega. Ray has shown significant growth in citizenship, positively influenced by his peers and forming stronger and more constructive connections. As a psych con counselor, he demonstrated his ability to make a positive impact on other students. Oh, sorry, that was a poignant pause, sorry. Ray also worked diligently to become eligible for football in his senior year, showcasing determination and commitment. His dedication to personal growth, leadership, and fostering positive peer relationships highlights his development as a responsible and influential member of his school community. Our next award winner is the USAV Student of the Season, and that's Hillary Topete. Hillary was nominated for her exceptional leadership and dedication to Golden West. As ASB Athletic Commissioner, she takes initiative, stays organized, and supports school athletics, promoting student involvement and school pride. Her reliability, hard work, and commitment to leadership and teamwork make her highly deserving of this recognition. Our next USAV Student of the Season is Ariely Solozano Diaz. Ariely was nominated for her exceptional leadership at Golden West. She brings enthusiasm, creativity, and initiative to every project, planning events, fostering school spirit, and ensuring student activities run smoothly. Ariely leads by example, collaborates effectively, and works tirelessly to create a welcoming, connected community. Her passion and dedication make her highly deserving of this recognition. The next Principal coming forward tonight is from Mount Whitney High School, and it's
Good evening. Hey, Maria. Go Whitney. For USAV, Isabella Deluna. Isabella is an exceptional leader who brings dedication and creativity to ASB. She has a talent for designing eye-catching signs and infographics fostering school spirit all across campus. While excelling in these roles, she maintains an impressive 3.85 GPA. As our school's drum major, she leads with enthusiasm and a positive energy that inspires all those around her. USAV not present today, probably out winning a track and field event. Joshua Santa Cruz. Joshua embodies the essence of a quiet leader, dependable, hardworking, and committed to excellence. He consistently ensures that every task he undertakes is completed to the highest standard. A dedicated athlete, he competes in both cross-country and track, while also excelling in our computer science program. Balancing these commitments, he maintains an outstanding 4.23 GPA. World Language, Yareli Ramos. She accomplished what few students achieve, earning a perfect score of five on both the AP Spanish Language and AP Spanish Literature exams, the latter being especially challenging. Since inception of the World Language Club, she's been an active member demonstrating a deep interest in exploring diverse cultures. For English, Kennedy Thomas. Kennedy is an exceptional leader who consistently excels academically, fully engages in class activities, and demonstrates a strong commitment to her future. Kennedy is always attentive, submits high-quality work on time, and approaches every task with a positive attitude. Her thoughtful contributions enhance class discussions as she leads by example with integrity and diligence. With her dedication, work ethic, and passion for learning, Kennedy is truly deserving of this recognition. Citizenship Growth, Ashley Borayo. Throughout her high school career, Ashley has consistently improved her grades and citizenship and is on track to graduate this spring. She has been an active member of the basketball team and has used her leadership to positively impact her peers. In addition to her academic commitments, Ashley now works part-time in the community while maintaining strong grades and preparing for her future. Her positive energy and warm smile, pause for the smile, just kidding, are always a welcome presence on our campus. Ashley exemplifies determination and ambition, paving the way for a bright and promising future.
Thank you, parents, for joining us today. If you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are more than welcome to do so, but I'm sure you want to go celebrate. Have a great evening.
Thank you. It is so nice, and congratulations to all the students who won awards tonight. Your hard work and dedication really shows. So thank you so much, parents and teachers, and also students. Moving on to general public comment. General public comment on any topic not on the agenda may be heard at this time. If you have public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for you to share your comments at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to board policy, the board will limit individual comments for general public comment to no more than three minutes, and individual topics to 20 minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, California's Open Public Meeting Law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibilities. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. And I have one public comment, Joel Moore.
Good evening. My name's Joel Moore. It's kind of hard to follow up with all of that with this kind of dreary stuff, but I'm just bringing to the attention of the board, I've gone to the management, the vice principal and the principal of Royal Oaks Elementary, where both my kids attend and my oldest son attended previously. We had a change of leadership over the past few years. Lisa Magarian was moved to another school. We had another principal, Mr. Gomez, come in, and he passed away from cancer. And then we have a new principal, Ms. Cooper. And the atmosphere on the campus has changed. There's a lot of issues coming up. There's a lot more fights occurring on the campus. And my wife works at the campus, so I can't really lean on my wife for any of this advice. It really is coming from my kids, their friends, as they come over and they talk to us about the incidences on the campus. There have been fights recently. On February 12th, there were three fights in the day. No students got suspended. There was one group of students that got a structured recess for one day after a fist fight. One of the fistfights was, you know, the kid was left bloody. They were on the ground. And I got frustrated. I had a meeting with Mr. Garza and Ms. Cooper, and they informed me that it's just ed code. And Mr. Cooper even emphasized the fact that these weren't fistfights. But my students and my friends and family that are around our area are saying that that's not what's happening. And the students are saying that they feel like it's just a free-for-all on the campus now. They know that they can't get in trouble. We've had a student's mother come on campus, create a scene, injure my wife while she was working. And there were incidences just today where a student made threats to students on campus, indicating he was going to come and shoot the school up. I can't talk to my wife, like I said, about this stuff. I'm just getting this information from my students. Haven't even had a chance to really even call the school about this latest incident. But this follows up another incident just about two weeks ago in my daughter's class, where another student made threatening comments. And so I'm just bringing to the board's attention that there is an atmosphere change at Royal Oaks, and it is a great school. It's got great staff, and I do believe in the leadership. I just feel like something is either hamstringing them. I don't know if they're, they feel like they're waiting for a Google review and they're afraid of maybe getting a bad review. I don't know what's going on. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention because I feel like it's not being addressed in the school properly. And I just feel so disappointed as a parent that has my kids going to that school that stuff's not being taken seriously. And it feels like it's getting more and more violent. There's like a buildup coming. And I, with this threat today, I just thought that I had to come down here, bring it to your attention, and I'm sorry that I had to be so dreary with such great things happening in front of us, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Okay, moving on, consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to pull Consent Item 7.55.
Any others? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or I should say the remaining items on the consent agenda other than 7.55?
Motion.
Second.
And a motion by Board Member Gabey, seconded by Board Member Gomoyen. Call for the vote.
Motion passes. Motion passes 7-0. Student votes yes.
And I'm going to go back to Item 7.55. Board discussion on that. Go ahead.
Yes, I just want the board and the public to be aware that 7.55 is an agreement between VISO Unified and Terabella Unified, which is the school district in which I'm employed. This item has to do with ed code leave under 44987.3 that I also qualify for. I have a direct conflict of interest on this item, and I will be abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve 7.55?
I salute.
I'll second.
Okay, hang on. Belt, and then who seconded?
Vegas.
Thank you. And a motion by Board Member Belt, seconded by Board Member Vegas. Call for the vote.
Motion passes. Vote six yes, one abstention. Student votes yes.
Moving on to Student Representative Report, Ms. Maria Vaidak, Mount Whitney High School.
For El Diamante, in honor of Black History Month, El Diamante Black Student Union and the Student Services Team organized lunchtime activities for students to experience spoken-word poetry, the evolution of hip-hop, and beaded jewelry-making. In celebration of Women's History Month, El Diamante will showcase local impactful women in our homeroom slide deck on posters around campus. The El Diamante Annual Buff Ball Tournament was March 3rd through 7th. This year, over 100 students performed, students formed teams for the co-rec volleyball tournament held every spring. The last day of the tournament featured a rivalry game between staff and students. El Diamante FFA organized a week of fun activities for National FFA Week. A highlight was watching teachers try to put clothes on a goat. For Golden West, on February 10th, Golden West celebrated Kindness Week with campus-wide fun, featuring awesome activities and feel-good moments for everyone. On February 21st, Golden West brought the fun with the winter carnival packed with excitement. FFA did the annual Kiss a Cow fundraiser, where they raised over 1,200 in a hilarious, heartwarming competition. On March 10th, Golden West ASB is bringing the heat with March Madness Tournament. On March 10th, Golden West ASB is bringing the heat with March Madness Tournament. Looking ahead, students are gearing up for two major events. Western Week packed with themed activities and school spirit, and the exciting kickoff of the Yosemite Sierra Showdown, bringing friendly, school-wide competition and fun to our campus. For Mount Whitney, Mount Whitney varsity wrestler Isaiah Cologne placed top 24 for the CIF State Wrestling Tournament for the 106 weight class. He went 3-2. Mount Whitney ASB is planning a, Mount Whitney is lucky to have a staff member like you, on March 17th. BTSC is planning a catch-up day for March 31st. This event helps encourage students to catch up on their grades. We have 27 teachers participating. Esports continues to be successful and adds another win to their record. For Redwood, varsity girls wrestler Audrey Segura took 7th place in the 145-pound weight class at the wrestling tournament, where she became the school's first four-time CIF state wrestling placer. ASB hosted the first-ever Makers Market, and it was a huge success for Redwood. We had 22 students, student business highlighted during the event. Students were able to bring business cards, items, to showcase, and et cetera, to show off their skills. The Class of 2026 hosted their annual car show on Friday, March 7th. Redwood FFA hosted the FFA Ranch Race during National FFA Week. Four teams plus teachers battled it out to see who could finish the course the fastest. The winner was the Redwood Ag Mechanics Team. For Sequoia, the Sequoia Counseling Team will host a parent meeting on Wednesday, March 12th at 5:00 p.m. to discuss post-secondary options for their graduating students. Sequoia will be ending Quarter Three with 51 graduates and is looking forward to enrolling 69 new students from across the district in Quarter Four. Sequoia's forestry class teacher, Mrs. Pacheco, will take a group of students to Sequoia National Park on Friday, March 14th, to assist in forest restoration. Sequoia Partner, Sequoia's partnership with the Sequoia National Parks Service allows students to gain hands-on experience while enjoying the park's beautiful scenery. For VCIS, VCIS 10th grade students continue to engage in one-on-one sophomore counseling, meeting conferences with each student and their families to map out their college and career goals, ensuring every student has a pathway to being college and career-ready upon graduating from VUSD. The TCOE Project Aware Team hosted a pop-up event at VCIS on February 19th, and it was a huge success. Students and staff were able to engage with the Project Aware Team, who are promoting mental health awareness and other various resources available to students. The VCIS Marine Biology students were able to engage in a field trip to the Monterey Bay Aquarium, where they got to put the skills they've learned this year into action. The students also had the opportunity to visit CSU, Monterey Bay, and tour the campus. For VTAC, VTAC FFA held their annual celebration during the National FFA Week. VTAC's parent group held a successful Denim and Diamonds event. VTAC staff is holding Casp and L-Pac Pump-Up Parties with other prize offerings for students that show engagement and critical thinking on the state tests. VTAC ASB is holding a Lucky Day Celebration on March 17th for students to build community and friendly competitions. During our last USAV meeting, held on February 24th, we started to review specific actions for the VUSD strategic plan. At this meeting, our area focus was on supportive learning and growth, establish student acknowledgement systems that honor and recognize a broad range of student achievement. We discussed ways to create a more positive and supportive school culture aligning with the VUSD strategic plans, commitment to student success, and well-being. A key focus was improving how we recognize and celebrate students for their achievements as recognition helps students feel valued and motivated to excel. We explored a wide range of recognition categories, including traditional academic rewards like honor roll, attendance milestones, scholarships, and graduation honors. Classroom-based incentives such as academic competition, homework passes, and public displays of student success were also, were also discussed as ways to encourage learning. Social media was highlighted as a tool to showcase student accomplishments, particularly in clubs, extracurriculars, and major events. Additionally, peer-to-peer recognition strategies such as team gifts, freshman acknowledgements, and small tokens of encouragement were emphasized as ways to build student connections. Community-based recognition, including scholarships and district-level awards, was also considered an important piece of the system. We also discussed different ways to deliver recognition, including in-person events like Senior Night and Board Awards, digital celebrations through school website and video programs, and physical displays such as posters, plaques, and banners. The overall goal is to create a well-rounded, consistent approach to student recognition that highlights achievements across academics, extracurriculars, leadership, and sports, helping all students feel seen, valued, and encouraged to reach their potential. We look forward to continuing our discussion of the VUSD strategic plan during our March meeting. Thank you.
Great job. I love the fact that we're going to highlight at each school because, you know, kids do like to be acknowledged for their hard work, so that's a great idea. Love it. Any board comments? Thank you, Mari. Let's go on to Board Member Reports. We'll start with Board Member Gabey.
Actually, I'm going to go no report.
Board Member DeYoung.
Thank you, President Neeler. I would also like to, I'd like to start by saying thank you to the public for their comments. Those things, items will be taken under advisement and referred to our Superintendent Kirkstrom to take action if needed. For my board report today, we're going to keep it short. Let's take bets on that. The first site that I'm going to talk about, I have to do a disclaimer that I do have a direct conflict of interest and heavily biased, which is Denton Elementary. And because I have my daughters and wife work there, just keep that in mind, but I have to say that Denton Elementary is a phenomenal school, primarily because of the culture that has been grown there. And you can see it every time you step on campus with the writing from students, which I'll talk about in a little bit, and then just by the sheer presence. And so, those are things that I notice, and I hope that the rest of the public notices as well. One of the things that was very profound when I visited there, I believe it was third-grade writing that was on the wall, and this is a direct quote from a third grader. And this had to do with a context about viewing the world through the eyes of a child, written by a child. And it was a child's eyes about seeing the world and being the best part of themselves. And that just struck me from, coming from a, from a third grader, thinking about those things and then portraying them in writing. So, just, it was great to read, great to visit, very, very glad about the things that are happening at that school. And I would be remiss if I did not talk about the librarian there at Denton Elementary. Not only is she my wife, but she is also an individual that does things for kids regardless of the accolades, regardless of the awards, just because it's something that needs to be done, and she cares that much. And she's probably really going to give it to me when I get home tonight for bringing this up, but she actually won several awards for high circulation for that library. And I wanted to point out that the work that she does is to get books into the hands of kids so that they can learn to love to read as much as she does. And that, to me, is what our libraries are all about. So, congratulations to Mrs. DeYoung. Please take it easy on me when I get home. The next site that I visited was Houston Elementary, Principal, with Principal, bop, Principal Monica Sines. And this was another interaction with students that just kind of blew me away, and I had to stop and think for a moment that this is coming from children. But we had visited one of the classrooms, and, you know, I knelt down to see what the kids were doing, and they were, they were doing a compare and contrast about a book called Kitty and Dragon. And, you know, unbeknownst to me, I was about to receive direct instruction from these two students, but they, they had this wonderful re, interaction and essentially performed dialogic reading to myself about this story. And I just kind of snelt there in awe as these students taught me about this book and comparing and contrasting about the characters. And so, I just wanted to make a notation of that, that we have kids out there that are doing so much more than you could ever think they're doing. And so, that was great to see. So, thank you. Next site that I visited, oh, actually, no, this is even better, Little Shop of Horrors musical put on by Eldie Amonte High School. I have a little bit of PTSD from this play, just because my mother owned a floral shop that I grew up in at a very young age, working, probably about nine or 10 years old. But who knew that plants could be deadly, right? And this was another great musical, phenomenal performance by students, that you would not think that they're students in a high school. You would think that they're on Broadway. And so, I just have to say, keep them coming, and as long as you keep up that high quality of, of plays and acting, myself and my family will be there to watch. Next item I have is the California School Board Association's Masters in Governance Course II that I took over the weekend, which was quite a bit of fun. We went over policy and judicial review, and we also touched on student learning and achievement. And so, I have a couple more of those to go to kind of, to knock out my, I guess it's an award or certification in the, oh, I get a pen. Oh, boy. Well, that's worth like six Saturdays right there. But yeah, that was great. Happy to attend. VTAC, Vaisalia Technical Early College, Principal Scott Braun. We, we had, actually, fellow trustee Belt and I had the pleasure to attend Denim and Diamonds, which was a fundraiser for those, for that school and those kids. And I was happy to bid on a few items and actually win most of them and able to give a couple to my mom. And it's just great to see that what our kids are doing and the successes of that because that's what we're here for. That's what it's all about. And so, it was a wonderful night full of inspirational stories of student success, great company in supporting our kids, and I wish them all the best and great job. March 4th, Board Work Session. So, to the public, if you want to see the meat and potatoes of what Cabinet and the District does, this is where you need to be. Because right here, you know, we, we go over our agenda and we go over items and student spotlights, but on these work sessions, we actually work on the direction and strategic plan for the District, which is vitally important. And so, if you're ever interested in that, to take a day to come and learn and put in public input, I highly encourage you to do so. Hurley Elementary with Carrie Montoya was able to just visit today. There was a great couple of students I have to notate in the library, since their librarian is currently out on extended leave. They were part of the school's leadership, and they were there donating their time to make sure that the library stays fully stocked and organized. And they were happy to do it. And that, to me, shows ownership in their school and that they care about how it looks and how books are getting to kids. So, to those students, I say thank you and keep up the great work. Divisadero Middle School, Kyle Yanes, is it Yanes or Yan? Yan is, man. I messed that one up. You can call me Kevin. So, I felt bad for Kyle because he was putting out a couple of fires while we were there, but I, I appreciate you leading us around. It was a great visit. We had the opportunity to talk to one of the very new intervention-prevention specialists that was going around on the golf cart. His name was Edgar. He was a former student, which is always great to see. And the interaction was, it was, it's one of those ones almost as good as the student interactions, just talking about how to reach fellow students and understanding where they've been and where they're going and how to get them, get them to a better place. And so, that's always great to hear from a former student who's now employed at this District. So, thanks again, Principal Kyle. Really appreciated the visit. So, great job. And last but not least, Vaisalia Partners in Education Committee, which is called VPY, which is interesting. But this committee meeting today, it's all about how we, as a District, we meet with our local business partners to figure out how to, how to make our pathways fit the needs of our kids and then also fit the community once they get out into the work field. And so, it's very important that, you know, it's one thing to just teach a vocation, but it's another thing to actually plan and prepare students as much as possible to be successful in actual careers once they leave school. And so, that was great to partake, great to hear input from our local partners, and very happy to attend. And with that, I conclude my board report. So, how'd I do, President Neeler?
Better. Board Member Belt.
Thank you, President Neeler. On behalf of the entire board, and of course, and our employee Superintendent Schrum, I want to make sure we say thank you once again. We'd only, they have all these days of appreciation, but we need to do it about every week for Monica Andrew, who keeps us organized, our board manager, who every morning, we get a text message reminding us what our calendar is and whether we are going to get there on time or not. And thank you so much, Monica. You keep us all going. And with that, I'm on target to still finish, I think, all 42 school sites by the end of the school year. And Principal Perch, again, it was fun to be able to be there with Board Member DeYoung to see Denton and all that's happening there. But I also want to announce that because of our attending the Denim and Diamonds, the VTAC Foundation fundraiser, the Belts will be helping the egg shortage. While I was talking, imagine that, while I was talking to a teacher and a parent about goats, my wife happened to raise her sign a number of times, and we won the auction for chicken coop. So, we now have a chicken coop in our backyard. Fortunately, we have about a half acre to put that there, and today I negotiated buying some chickens. It's going to take a long time for us to recoup the cost of all of that, but thank you once again, Principal Braun and that parent group that literally raises money. They had $30,000 last year for scholarships, and I think they were pretty close to that again this year. So, it literally is an extremely active parent group that helps students at VTAC. I, I enjoy reading across America, so I actually, I do the crazy thing, and that is wear a bright-colored jacket and do voices and read the same book, Sneetches, from TK all the way to sixth grade, because I can mold it to that age group, whichever group I'm with. And this year, I actually had the opportunity to go to seven schools and 26 classes, not something that everyone is going to jump into doing, but thank you for all of the principals who worked really hard, had point people who actually gathered these community folks to come in and inspire young people. Keep reading, reading, reading. Saturday, I attended the Science Olympiad, as I almost forgot it. But if you want to look at my Facebook, you'll see a video that I put out this afternoon highlighting the amazing number of students who applied science. And again, congratulations to Green Acres, Principal Corliss, and all of your coaches that helped. They won first place, and Ridgeview won second place, and they're going to go on to state. This is a, it's kind of an add-on thing, that we don't always have enough, perhaps, adults helping. So, I'd like to highlight that some way possible because it's applying their science. And of course, then I was surprised, my granddaughter from Hanford was actually there to taking a test on fossils and anatomy or something. But it is putting, again, science into some applications in an amazing event that our county helps support, but also then, of course, back to the school sites. Today, I also attended the Power School Chronic Absenteeism Webinar. So, I have some ideas of what Power School is going to help introduce to us, to do some add-ons to the already software that we purchased from them, to help parents and families and students be aware of how things are going on our daily absentee look, and to actually encourage students that, and we're seeing the numbers, they are trending. We are seeing are seeing improvement. It doesn't take more money, just takes more awareness. And so I'm looking forward to seeing that we continue to see, uh, our chronic absenteeism take a good chunk downward, uh, as other school districts are still wrestling with it. So, congratulations to, uh, our staff. Uh, it is improving here. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Vegas.
Thank you, President Naylor. Uh, I, like many board members, have the privilege to read to some classrooms and I got to read the Lorax and a story about creepy carrots, which was lots of fun. Um, so thank you for all of our teachers, librarians and staff, uh, that are really fostering a love of reading, uh, across our district. Um, since our last board meeting, I've had several community members and constituents and even folks outside of the district and outside of Visalia and Tulare, reach out to me about information around Immigration Services Workshop, information, um, and specifically our board policies. And so, of course, I'm always looking to what are other school districts doing? How can we improve? How can we, you know, do things differently? Um, so I looked up Fresno Unified, and if you Google Fresno Unified Immigration, you get this awesome website, uh, that greets you, uh, with a commitment of Fresno Unified School District to every student, regardless of immigration status, a video welcoming folks to the site and the page in English, Spanish and in Hmong as well. On that same site, it has information about board policies translated in Spanish and Hmong as well, um, as well as family preparedness plans, resources, uh, an immigration video for school site staff, um, local news, local resources, um, workshops, uh, facilitated both through the district and through, uh, nonprofit organizations. And I, all this wonderful information, including information about social and emotional supports for students and families. I have shared this website, uh, with our school district staff and I would love to see our district lead in the same way and, and provide this information to our students and families, um, and, and not just in English, but in Spanish and Hmong and any other languages, um, that, you know, our community members need this information in. Um, I would absolutely love to see that and I know it's necessary resources for all of our families and students. Um, and secondly, I, I, I'm an avid reader of federal, state, local news, uh, but also news from our school sites. And so I did want to highlight one article from a student at Redwood High School, uh, which was concerned about bathrooms being closed during the regular school day. Um, and them stating that, you know, bathrooms are locked for the first and 10 minutes, uh, in class, um, and also some of the concerns that have arisen amongst students and staff. And understandably, we know we want our bathrooms to be safe. I know our district has been working very hard, uh, in terms of, um, you know, informing students about resources and preventing vaping and things that happen inside bathrooms. And so, um, but I also want to note that there is ed code around this and I want to ensure that our district is following ed code, uh, around bathrooms and ensuring that we have a sufficient number of bathrooms and restrooms open, uh, when students are in classes. Uh, understandably, I, even as adults, right, uh, we don't always have control over our bodies and when we need to use the restroom. So, I just want to make sure that we are continuing to follow ed code appropriately. Uh, I know Redwood is also very unique and it has a very big campus and we want to make sure students have time, uh, to, to use the restroom before and after class. Um, but just wanted to flag that, uh, and also wanted to thank our student reporters on the ground, um, and, you know, all students who are bringing issues and awareness to the board. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Gamoyen.
Thank you, principals who invited me to read at Read Across America. That always is fun to interact with kids. Um, as I've been going around, I just really appreciate the engagement that I see with the students. I kind of feel like now I'm seeing our strategic plan unfold in front of me and that's really, um, cool to see. And teachers, when I go around to different schools, you inspire me, so thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Odo.
Yeah, just a real quick thank you to Houston Elementary and Principal Monica Sines. Had a great visit there earlier in the week. Got a chance to walk around for an hour with her and with her assistant principal. And the feel on campus is really, really solid. It feels, uh, active, it feels happy, feels healthy, feels organized, feels academic. Uh, you see evidence of teachers planning together and doing things in coordination, common assessments, um, things that help kids understand where they're at, things that help kids learn on a day-to-day basis, teachers that are positive. So, thank you for the site visit and thank you for, for what I saw there at that school. As Mrs. Gamoyen says, you know, we're, the strategic plan is taking effect, but more than that, folks understand what kids need to experience to be able to learn and Houston is an excellent example of that.
Thank you. I want to kind of reiterate that same thing, you know, um, I appreciate Principal Yates and also Principal Meyer, when I went to Mount Whitney and, and Lincoln Elementary. And it's nice to see the kids engaged in learning. And it was Valentine's Day at elementary school, so to see kids learning and engage, I thought, whoa, we're doing something right. So, thank you again. Um, I also want to thank Maria for participating and being our student rep and also participating in USAV. It's important that we have our student voice, um, as part of our strategic plan. So, that input is very, very critical. So, thank you so much. That's it. Student, uh, student and no report. Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Going on to administrative panel recommendations, actions, do, may I have a motion to approve the recommended expulsions?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, on a motion by, uh, Board Member Gabey, seconded by Board Member DeYoung, call for the vote.
Motion passes seven zero, student abstains.
Moving along, recommended reinstatements, may I have a motion to approve the recommended expulsions reinstatements?
I'll make a motion.
Who said that?
Dr. B.
I'll second. Okay. On a motion by, uh, Board Member Vegas, seconded by Board Member Gabey, call for the vote.
Motion passes seven zero, uh, student abstains.
Moving on to item 12.1, Global Learning Charter School renaming. Uh, presenter is going to be Administrative School Leadership, Liz Serrato.
Good evening again, Board President Naylor, Board Members and Superintendent Shrum. You'll recall last Tuesday at our board study session, Assistant Superintendent Mark Thompson shared with you the report of the process used to recommend the naming of GLC. Tonight, I'm bringing the outcomes for your consideration. But first, I would like to take a moment and acknowledge the odd-ho committee made up of students, parents and staff of GLC for their work in this endeavor. Some of them left, because it got a little bit late for them, but I would like you pleased to stand so that we can recognize your work. Thank you so much. I know there were several meetings and we appreciate your work very much. Board, we have tonight the second reading for your consideration of approval of the new name. Oh, here we go. Which, um, aligns the process and based on the voting, this is what we have. The new name for your consideration will be Sierra View Elementary. They will keep Stars as the mascot and their new colors will be black and gold.
Uh, any public comment? Any board member discussion? Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to rename Global Learning Charter School to Sierra View Elementary with the mascot of the Stars and the school colors of black and gold?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second.
Okay, on a motion by, uh, Board Member Vegas, seconded by Board Member Belt, vote.
Motion passes seven zero, student votes yes.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, congratulations. Moving on to 12.2, Visal Unified School District Second Interim Budget Report, Director of Business Services, Kayla Johnson.
Good evening, Board President Naylor, members of the board and Superintendent Shrum. My name is Kayla Johnson and I am here tonight to present the 2425 Second Interim Budget Report Our second interim report is essentially our midway check-in point for our budget, July 1st through January 31st, 2025. Our budget is the tool that the board has to ensure that we are meeting our core beliefs and commitments. The budget provides us with the resources that allow us to ensure that all students can achieve at high levels and demonstrate, demonstrate continuous growth. The board's role in that is approving our budget and is what set the conditions for student learning in our district. And this also allows us to align our budget to our strategic plan. Our agenda for tonight, we will go through the second interim report and go through our revenues and expenditures, and then we will also talk through the multi-year projection for our general fund and then go over VUSD outlook and discuss next steps. The purpose of our second interim report is to certify to our county office of education and the state that we are fiscally solvent. And that means that we are able to meet our financial obligations for our current year and the next two years. And when we look at our, um, our, uh, minimum reserve, that means that we end, or we have a, we have to have a minimum of a 3% reserve. And right now, we are projecting a little over 9% reserve in our general fund, so we are able to meet that reserve. And in terms of our NYPD, which I'll go over in a later slide, we are showing deficit spending and we plan to do that this year and the next, and that is related to spinning down the ending balances of our one-time funds for learning recovery. And then as part of our 2526 budget adoption in June, that's when we will be bringing recommendations back to the board to, um, approve that budget and get us back in line. And because of the position that the board has put us in, we are able to certify a, uh, positive ending fund balance, which is another requirement. This slide shows our general fund summary. It's broken out between unrestricted and restricted and then combined. We do spend most of our time talking about the general fund unrestricted budget, because this is our main operating budget. And we're, on this slide, what we're wanting to point out is our net change in fund balance. So, as you can see on the unrestricted side, we are showing a deficit of 6.19 million dollars. Our restricted side shows 27.5 with a combined total of 33.7 in deficit spending. The restricted side of the, the general fund is where we have our categorical programs and also our one-time expenditures. And this is where, like, our learning recovery funds are. And just as a reminder, when we talk about deficit spending, that means that we're spending money in a current year, um, for expenditures, but the revenue was received in a prior year. So, that's why it shows as a deficit. This side is our general fund revenue. This is a comparison of our revenues at first interim to second interim. As you can see, the main changes here are related to our LCFF revenue and our other local revenue. Our LCFF revenue saw an increase of about 4.2 million dollars in revenue and that's related to, um, an increase in attendance rates. And then also, we had just under 1% increase in our unduplicated pupil count. And then our other local revenue increase is related to our interest earnings and that is our money that we receive that's pooled at our county, uh, county treasurer's office. This slide is our general fund expenditures and you can see here, um, overall, the increase in expenditures from first interim to second interim is 4.3 million dollars. This is just about a one, just under a 1% change and this is mainly reflecting shifts within our budget. The main areas that we did see increases here are related to our books and supplies and that has to do with increasing, our increased funding for our LCAP and our Title I. And then we also saw increase in services for, um, our ELOP programs and special ed. This slide goes over our general fund unrestricted deficit. So, as I mentioned earlier, we are showing a 6.19 million dollar deficit. And when we back out one-time, um, costs or care, and carryover, which accounts for our site and charter discretionary and then our LCAP, that actually brings us to a surplus of 3 million dollars. And this is our multi-year projection. Again, this is on general fund unrestricted. On the left-hand side of this, side of this slide, this shows the assumptions that we use to build out the current year projection for 2425 and the next two years. This information is based on the governor's budget proposal that we did receive in January. So, we, um, we based the budget based on those COLAs and the ADA. And the ADA is our funding based on actual student attendance and this is as we are coming out of our three-year hold harmless agreement. And as you can see for our ADA, those numbers stay the same. We do budget conservatively and do not budget for growth. So, current year, as I mentioned, we are looking at a 6.19 million dollar deficit. And then in the two out-years, we show a slight deficit in 2526. And then in 2627, we are projecting a surplus of 6 million dollars. And I just want to point out that these are based on assumptions at the time as what, for what we know and they can fluctuate. We will be receiving, the governors may revise in May, and so, once we have that information, then we will make, um, adjustments accordingly. And then I also want to point out, last year, when we brought our multi-year projection to the board for second interim, we were projecting a 10 million dollar deficit for 2425. And so, right now, you can see that we're at a 6.1 million dollar deficit and that's due to some of the actions that we've already taken and the board has approved. Um, and that is like the early retirement incentive, some of the organizational restructuring and then also working through the LCAP process. And those are things that are helping us to bring that deficit down. And for the VUSD fiscal outlook, our governor issued the initial budget proposal for 2526 in January. This slide highlights some of the major things that are coming out as regarding that. We do have a projected COLA of 2.43%. We also have our transitional or TK class size ratio of 10 to 1. We also have some potential changes for the ELOP program coming and that's moving from tier, the tier one to 55% unduplicated rate, which could result in more funding for us. And then there's also proposals for one-time funding related to professional development, teacher retention and other rising costs. And then there's also new investments proposed for CTE and school facilities projects related to Prop 2. And then some of the, the fiscal challenges that still remain for Visal Unified are our flat to declining enrollment. That is being offset by the TK growth for another year. And then we also have the expiration of the one-time funds. Our next steps is, um, adoption of the second interim budget report, um, tonight, and then we will submit that to our county office of education for approval by, um, March 17th. And then in May, the governor has until May 14th to issue his may revise to the 2526 budget. And then in, on June 10th, we will be bringing our proposed budget and estimated actuals for 2526. And then on June 12th is when we will be bringing that back for adoption. And then we will come back again in September, where we will be, be bringing you our unad audited actuals for 2425, which will be the closeout of this year in September. And that's the end of my presentation.
Good job, Kayla. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, any public comment? Any board member comment? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Second Interim Budget Report?
I'll make a motion, second.
On a motion by Board Member Gabey, seconded by Board Member Gamoyen, call for the vote.
Motion passes seven zero, student votes yes.
Good job, thank you. 12.3, Public Hearing, Visal Unified School District Interest Initial Proposal for Classified Negotiations, Second Reading. I will now open the public meeting, or public hearing to allow for public comment on this item. Uh, Ministry of Human Services, Judy Burgess.
That's okay. Good evening, Board President Naylor, Board Members and Superintendent Shrum. Um, I would like to, um, start us off with our district interests. Um, provisions of the California Government Code, Article 8, Section 3547, require that public school employers and exclusive representatives present proposals which relate to matters within the scope of representation at a public meeting of the public school employer prior to commencing negotiations. The district approaches the coming negotiations with California School Employees Association, Chapter 83, with the intent to negotiate a mutually agreeable contract through collaborative and objective bargaining in order to address common interests in alignment with the district's vision, mission and goals. Our district interests are to ensure all students achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth, to provide learning environments that are safe, supportive and innovative, supporting employee success and equipping them with the tools necessary for achievement and growth, maintaining district reserves to preserve the instructional program for all students during economic cycles, and engaging in an open and honest exchange of information through collaborative and objective bargaining with California School, uh, Employees Association, Chapter 83. We have an interest in- We have an interest in opening the following articles, Article 14, Evaluation Procedure, and Article 15, Leaves. Both parties have an interest in opening mutually agreed-upon articles, Article 10, Employee Benefits, and Article 13, Salary, and both parties also have an interest in opening mutually agreed-upon articles in which we would bring in agreed-upon MOUs. Again, we look forward to good faith negotiations with California School Employees Association, Chapter 83, and both parties acknowledge our commitment to provide an exemplary educational program to the students and community we serve.
Thank you, Judy. Any public comment? Any board member comment? I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular session. May I have a motion to approve Visalia Unified School District Interest Initial Proposal for Classified Negotiations?
So moved.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Gomoyen and seconded by Board Member Odo, call for the vote.
Motion passes seven zero, student votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then 12.4, Public Hearing, California School Employees Association, Chapter 83, Initial Proposal for Classified Negotiations, Second Read. I again will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item.
Thank you, and I'd like to introduce CSA President Shawna Wheaton and Chief Negotiator Andrew Sanchez.
I mean, need to make a correction. I'm the vice president, not president. Superintendent Shrum, President Naylor, Board Members, and Ms. Vidak. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Shawna Wheaton. I'm the librarian media tech at Mount Whitney High School. I've been employed with the USD since 2008. I'm currently the Chapter 83 Vice President, and I would like to formally introduce our Chief Negotiator, Andrew Sanchez. He will be presenting our second read.
Thank you, Judy and Shawna. Oh, sorry. Good evening, Board President Naylor, Superintendent Shrum, and the trustees. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you all to present our second reading for our negotiations. I'm Andrew Sanchez, as they introduced me as, and I'm a full-time specialized learning center support technician for our district, as well as serving as our chief negotiator for our union. I'm proud to serve over at Valley Oak Middle School, our SELK program and Compass program. CSA approaches the district with the intent to negotiate a mutually agreeable contract through positive, collaborative, and objective bargaining that will benefit both parties and allow our students, families, and district to receive the essential support and services they need while ensuring a safe and inclusive learning environment. CSA seeks to ensure VUSD students and families receive this support necessary to succeed. The following is our proposal from the California School Employees Association and its Visalia Chapter 83 to the Visalia Unified School District for our 2025-2026 re-opener negotiations. The California School Employees Association and its Visalia Chapter 83 present this initial proposal for the 2025-26 re-opener under the provisions of the current bargaining agreement. It is CSA's intent to alter or amend the following articles as indicated and present our proposals for public discussion in accordance with Government Code 3547. Our interests are as follows. Article 8, Promotions. CSA proposes modifications to enhance the promotion selection process. Article 10, Employee Benefits. CSA proposes to increase the district's contribution to employee benefits to cover any increases and maintain the current benefit standard for all unit members. Article 13, Salary. CSA proposes to enhance the salary schedule to provide an equitable wage increase to help maintain the integrity of the salary schedule and an acceptable standard of living for all employees. In Article 15, Leaves, CSA proposes to modify the language contained in bereavement and jury duty to align with the changes to state law and provide additional clarification. All other provisions of the collective bargaining agreement enforced to June 30th, 2027 shall remain in full force. CSA reserves the right to make additional proposals at any time during the bargaining process, including but not limited to responses to proposals made by the district. Thank you. We look forward to continue serving our students, families, and of course, our district with the utmost respect to professionalism and sitting down with Dr. Burgess and the rest of the VUSD negotiations team. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Andrew and Shawna. Any public comment? Any board member comment? I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular session. May I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the CSA Chapter 83 Initial Proposal for Classified Negotiations?
I'll motion.
And I'll second.
Who said that?
Belt.
Thank you. I'm sorry. On a motion by Board Member DeYoung and seconded by Board Member Belt, may I have a vote?
Motion passes seven zero, student votes yes.
Moving right along, 12.5, Recommendation and Resolution to Eliminate Particular Kinds of Classified Service, Classified Positions. Judy Burgess.
Good evening again. Recommendation, I bring before you, recommendation and resolution to eliminate particular kinds of classified service, classified positions, and all of the positions are indicated by Exhibit A included.
Okay, any public comment? Any board member comment? Board Member DeYoung.
Yes. Would it be possible to have a short explanation for the reasoning why these reductions are necessary for the district?
Yes, so there's only two reasons why we would have classified eliminations or reductions. That would be a lack of work or a lack of funds. Did you want me to maybe expand a little bit more on some of the reductions? We have several, almost half of the reductions are from learning recovery funds, which are setting this year. So those were temporary additional hours that were added.
Thank you. My second question is, this agreement was in collaboration, in agreement with CSA Chapter 83?
Yes.
Okay. And then third and final question is for our Superintendent Kirk Shrum. Kirk, is it your recommendation for approval of this resolution?
This is the staff district recommendation, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Any other board comments?
I just wanted to also additionally comment. I know there were lots of concerns around some of the potential cuts to hours, and though I also recognize our district's efforts in maintaining benefits in positions that previously did not have benefits, so I just want to thank both our district and our union partners, you know, for these in-good faith negotiations as our district moves forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comment? May I have a motion to approve the recommendation and the resolution to eliminate particular kinds of classified service, classified positions?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Gabey, seconded by Board Member Gomoyen, call for the vote.
Motion passes seven zero, yes, and student votes yes.
Moving on to 12.6, Notice of Intent to Employ Certificated Personnel and Approval of Provisional Internship Permit Request. Administration of Human Resources Judy Burgess.
Last one, Board President Naylor and Board Members and Superintendent Shrum. This is a recommendation for approval for provisional internship permit for the candidate to then demonstrate the requirement of subject matter competency.
Any public comment? Any board member comment?
Can I make a comment real quick?
Absolutely. Board Member Gomoyen?
I probably should have made it the last thing, but I just appreciate the collaboration between the district and our classified employees and our certificated employees, so thank you.
Thank you.
If I can say something to President Naylor, also, but let it be known real clearly, we are not expanding one for the other. We're not expanding certificated, we're just literally replacing this internship. So it's just an ongoing development of our entire district.
Any other comments? I want to kind of reiterate what Board Member Gomoyen said. Thank you for the interest-based bargaining, that the collaboration means, you know, it's for the good of all, so I appreciate that. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Notice of Intent to Employ Certificated Personnel and Provisional Internship Permit Request?
So moved. I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Gomoyen, seconded by Board Member Gabey, call for the vote.
Motion passes seven zero, student votes yes.
President Naylor, if I could make one more comment. My understanding is too, district-wide, we have like 200 positions open, is that why?
We have approximately 196 vacant open positions.
Okay, thank you.
Close enough. Thank you, Ms. Burgess.
Great, thank you.
12.7, Warrant List, February 1st, 2025 to February 28th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve the warrant list from February 1st, 2025 through February 28th, 2025?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Odo, seconded by Board Member Belt, call for the vote.
Motion passes six yes, one abstention, student votes yes.
And with that, meeting is now adjourned.